Good evening, everyone. Uh, this is the Acushnet Planning Board. Today is October 12th. The time is 6:04. Uh, this meeting is being held via Zoom. Uh, being recorded for future viewing on the Acushnet YouTube channel. Uh, and I'm assuming we might even be live on cable. Uh, can I get a motion to open the meeting?
I'll make a motion to open the meeting.
A second motion.
On favor?
Aye. Roll call. You must do a roll call.
Yeah, we're gonna roll call, but we're on Zoom. Uh, Steve?
Yep, Steve Boucher, member. Aye.
Dave Devignan, member. Aye.
Okay, we roll called and introduced ourselves. Uh, no minutes to review and no correspondence. This is um, this is a meeting, this is our second meeting for the planning board to deliberate and finalize some small changes to the new zoning articles. Um, next on the agenda is discussion of the topics. Uh, number one is the Acushnet zoning bylaw, section 3.4, the special permit requirements. Um, I'm not gonna read through it. Huh, I just got a text from Brian, looks like he drove down to the town hall, thought it was live. He's going back home to try to jump on Zoom. Um, sorry, uh, this was, this is, uh, number one is the Acushnet zoning bylaw, section 3.4, special permit requirement. Uh, Article 13 of zoning of the general code accepted by town meeting. Uh, April 22nd, 1996, and most recently amended December 28th, 2022. By inserting the following text after the second sentence. "A special permit elapses if not exercised within two years from the date of the decision, including time for determination of any appeal or take any other action relative thereto." The planning board accepts this article, uh, except this article at the October 5th, 2023 public hearing, and the planning board will resume deliberations. Uh, gentlemen, we haven't, we, we've already agreed to it, and I think we voted on it. I don't think there's much more for discussion on this one.
Mr. Chairman, it's, uh, I will pull it up, uh, if you give me a minute. There is language that was added by town council.
Okay.
And I'm trying to pull it up as we speak. I didn't print it out, and so if you give me a minute, I will. Open it, it allows for you to do an extension that's a flexible timeframe.
Oh, that's right, yes. I guess I'm not reading from the most updated one. I remember reading that on one of the, actually, we had that, I think, at our previous.
You did.
Yes, um, I don't have the latest.
And that was the one that you approved.
It is, yes, um.
Bring it up now. I'm not getting through to Town Hall. Well, in effect, what it does is, let me see if I can.
If you can read what you got, instead of putting it up on the screen.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm trying to access it now. Uh, why don't we go on to the, uh, and I'll, what, why don't we go on to the, uh, special residential development? And I'll, while we're discussing that, I'll try to open it.
Uh, one quick second, I might actually have a idea. "The special permit lapses if not exercised within two years from the date of the grant thereof. A special permit may be extended by the Special Permit Granting Authority for good cause shown for up to two years, or take any other action relative thereto."
Yep.
That's it. Yeah, that's the one we discussed at our first meeting, that's the one that we voted on, and that's the one that we approved. Um, just to make it official, can I get a motion? To approve as written, so we can send it to selectmen?
I make a motion to approve the updated version um, with the new language from town council.
Okay.
Uh, roll call vote, uh.
Steve Boucher. Dave Devignan, aye.
Okay, tonight for Mark French, it's unanimous. All right, moving on to number two, uh, special residential development over 55 zoning bylaw amendment. I amend Article 8 zoning bylaw of the general bylaw by adding new section 3.3, 3.7, special residence development over 55 housing, or take any other action in relation thereto. The planning board accepts this article with amendments at the October 5th, 2023 public hearing, the planning board will resume deliberation. Uh, gentlemen, we, we talked in detail about this at our last meeting on October 5th. It went to, back to the selectmen. They approved, I think, just about everything, there were some minor tweaks. Uh, and that's why we're here now to kind of go over those minor tweaks. Um, Paul sent everybody a copy of what I'm about to go over, if you want to follow along. But I'm gonna kind of go through and read what was, uh, the red lines and what was, um, agreed upon. Uh, the first one is at letter C under standards, down to number one, which is track size. Originally, we had agreed upon, uh, in the sewer area, a minimum of three acres, no more than 50. Uh, the selectmen decided to change that from no more, no less than three acres, no more than 30. So it came from 50 down to 30 in the sewer areas and in the non-sewer areas, we originally had, uh, 15 to 50 acres. The selectmen decided to change that from 15 to 50 down to 10 to 30 acres. Uh, and the, and they redlined, the frontage shall be a minimum.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, that was what you sent over to the, uh, selectmen, the change in the frontage.
Yes, yeah, the change in the frontage was what we sent to them, and they left it at that. The frontage shall be a minimum, and they redlined 50 feet to the 150 feet on a public way, and we redlined, "Any project exceeding 30 dwelling units shall be 100 feet on a public way." That got redlined. Uh, any questions?
Uh, just one, uh, quick comment or two. Uh, Jamie, if you can just please note that where it's crossed out, "And projects exceeding 30 dwelling units", the word "shall" for whatever reasons not crossed out, but it's in the middle of a sentence crossed out, so it's obvious. It's gonna be deleted, but it's like a hanging chat up there.
It's pressed out in the master sheet, so it must be.
Yeah, I figure maybe it's what's shown on my phone, I'm reading off my phone. Otherwise, um, I, I actually love the changes suggested by the select board. Um, and, uh, ready to move on to the next one.
Fabulous.
I agree.
Fabulous. Number two, age qualification is the only thing that was added. Uh, a SRD may only be constructed as housing intended for persons of age 55 or over within, within the meaning of MLG 151B, S416, and 42 USC, S367, B2C, in accordance with the same. And 100% of the dwelling units in a special residential development shall be owned, and then added is all rented.
And that was your add?
That was our add, and the selectmen agreed.
Accepted it.
Accepted it. Okay, anything on that? We're good?
We're good.
We're moving on. Uh, number four, the whole, the, a lot of the paragraph, um, was redlined, so this was something that, um, went back and forth with the selectmen and the, and the planning board. "Maximum number of dwelling units permitted." Being redlined is the wording, "The maximum number of residential buildings within an SRD shall be computed based on the maximum number of dwelling units." That's being redlined. What's also being redlined is "The maximum number of dwelling units shall contain no more than the maximum number of bedrooms and shall be distributed at the developer's discretion between one to two bedrooms per dwelling unit." Those are being, uh, redlined. Hello, Brian, how are you?
Uh, and, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, in the, what will be the first sentence was the second sentence. "The maximum number of residential dwelling units." The words "residential dwelling" were added by your board, and the selectmen accepted it.
Correct. "The maximum number of residential dwelling units per acre of buildable area shall be determined by multiplying the buildable area expressed in acres by the number 3." Also staying is, "In order to achieve a maximum development as allowed under the above measures, the applicant must demonstrate compliance with all other standards identified in section C." Any questions on that one, those changes?
No, they took a lot of fluff out of it, what it looks like.
They took out a lot of.
A lot of extra words that didn't need to be there.
Exactly, and a lot of it just didn't make sense. When you read through it, it just didn't make sense.
Yeah, the rea- the reason why is because this is mimicking a Rochester bylaw that did things based on number of bedrooms. And so those extra sentences were needed for clarification. Um, and you have to, you have to keep in mind Rochester is, has no sewer areas, and they have no watered areas. So they, they essentially created a bylaw that is based on bedrooms because Title V septic system will govern, the maximum is four per acre. So they, they had a whole thing in there that, you know, just didn't fit our town. And, and I commend the select board again, this is a nice cleanup of that paragraph, which is maybe the most important paragraph in the whole document. And limiting it down or minimizing it down to the two sentences does the trick. It, it just clearly states what you can and cannot do, or how you compute, um, your potential development. So with that, I, I'm, I'm fully on board and love it.
Fabulous. Moving on, uh, number five, configuration of buildings, uh, down to letter B. "Dwelling units per building, no building shall contain more than," the number two was stricken, and we added four dwelling units. That was done by the planning board. Uh, the.
Board of Selectmen accepted.
Board of Selectmen accepted, fabulous. Uh, moving on to letter C, "Maximum height, no building constructed in an SRD shall exceed 35 feet in height, nor exceed two full levels of living area." "Of living area" was added by the planning board.
Board of Selectmen accepted it.
Fabulous. Any questions before I'm turning the page? Turning the page, okay, uh, number six, number two on the number six. Uh, we struck, struck out the word "Acushnet Wetland Protection Act", oh, excuse me, Acushnet and bylaw, and we added Massachusetts and act. So what it will read was Conservation Commission pursuant to the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act. And basically, we're going by the Massachusetts law, uh, bylaw, not the Acushnet bylaw.
That's because we don't have a bylaw.
We don't have one. So we'll go by this.
Call.
Mr. Devignan, uh, pointed that out.
That, that's a good point. Uh, that's all on page 22, moving on to page 23. "Interrelationship of Buildings." Uh, instead of reading the entire paragraph, "What was stricken, buildings shall comply with a minimum setback of," originally was 50 feet, that was stricken, and then we put in 40 feet. And then coming down a little bit further, "The planning board at its discretion may allow up to 25% of the building to be, to have minimum setbacks from each other, up to, 40 feet was stricken, brought down to 30 feet if the applicant demonstrates outstanding preservation of natural features and/or open space."
That was a planning board amendment, the Board of Selectmen accepted it.
Fabulous. That is all on page 23, moving on to page 24. Under number 11, parking. Um, "Additional parking in a proximity to any clubhouse or other facility serving residents in common or guest parking shall be provided in off-street parking areas, provided that no single accessory parking area shall contain," the word "more" got stricken and added "less," so contained "less than." The words "one half" was stricken, the word "one" was added, so this is what it's gonna read. "Provided that no single accessory parking area shall contain less than one space per residential unit in the entire project, and all such areas shall be adequately landscaped, adequately landscaped. The adequacy of all parking facilities shall be determined by the planning board," and this was added, "which may grant a waiver on the number of parking spaces." That was added by the planning board.
And the Board of, uh, uh, Selectmen accepted it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment on this. I think, I believe, after "contain", shall contain "not less than one space per residential unit." That "more" should be "not," should be a "not."
Well, actually, it's because up by "provided," it said, "Provided that no single accessory." So when you have the "no" up there, if you have the "not" in the second place, it, in effect, gives you a not double negative.
Okay.
So you either have to remove "no" and put "not," or leave "no" and leave it the same.
Well, I'll leave it, I'll leave the same, Mr. English professor.
I like that. Um, okay, um, there's something else that's not on your, um, paper. I actually spoke to the Kevin Gaspar, the chair of the select board. He, um, he was combing through this thing with a fine-tooth comb again, and he found one more small little error uh, on number 14, um, under project maintenance. "Every SRD shall establish a trust, association, or other legal entity whose membership includes all dwelling unit owners." And what we're gonna add is slash renters, and which shall have the power to assess costs and fees to the dwelling unit owners, slash adding renters satisfactory to the planning board. Does anybody understand that?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause in, uh, in a previous, um, paragraph, we had added the word renters, and this was just an area that it also needed to be added that we kind of missed. Uh, and Mr. Gaspar caught it, he gave me a quick shout to point it out to me. And, uh, if it's okay with, it's okay with the select board, and if it's okay with the planning board, we're gonna add not only owners, but also renters to that paragraph. Is that okay with everyone here?
Yeah, I think it did, it gives, it gives, it gives some politics to the, uh, to the renters as well, as far as ma- keep, keeping the maintenance of their property up.
Correct.
No, I think it's a great addition, and I, I commend Selectmen, Chairman Gaspar, for all the efforts he put into this thing.
Yeah.
I know he did a lot of work.
He, he really went through it, um, word for word. That's it on page 24, moving on, nothing on page 25. We are on page 26, uh, one, two, third paragraph down. Again, like Mr. Devignan said, this was taken from the Rochester, um, bylaw, so it's stricken that it says Rochester Wetland Protection Act. So let's get rid of the Rochester Wetland Protection Act, and we are going to insert Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act. Let's go by the Mass and not by the Rochester. Yeah. Uh, moving on down, number two, letter B. Doing the same thing, we are removing Acushnet Wetland Protection bylaw, because we don't have one, and adding Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act. Questions? Moving on, page 27. Um, all the way down to the bottom of page 27, letter E. "Plans showing proposed methods of stormwater management, including drainage calculations per the planning board, subdivision rules and regulations, and stormwater bylaw." We are adding the word "subdivision" to planning board rules and regulations, so it'll say, "Planning board subdivision rules and regulations." And we are also adding stormwa- stormwater bylaw. Questions?
That was planning board amendment, and the Board of Selectmen accepted it.
Agreed. Moving on to page 28, uh, letter G. Again, going halfway down, where it says, "Of units to be owned or rented and occupied by at least one person of age 55 or over." The words "or rented" are added to "owned," after "owned." Uh, that was, uh, added by the planning board, and the select board agrees. Uh, letters J and K were completely stricken. Uh, I'll read them for the records, "A letter J, a natural and wildlife resource inventory approved by vote of the Conservation Commission," was stricken. And K, and historical and archaeological resource inventory approved by a vote of the Historical Commission, that's a mouthful, was also stricken. Uh, moving on, uh, number three, "Reports from the town boards and agencies." So I'll read what's staying, "The planning board shall transmit, transmit forthwith a copy of the application and plans to the planning board of Selectmen, Board of Health, Conservation Commission, Board of Assessors, Historic District Commission, Building Commissioner, Fire Department, Highway Surveyor, and the Police Department." So these, any plans that we get for, uh, an over 55 development has to go to all these boards. So all these eyes will get, get on it. "What is being stricken is, 'Review and written approval of the concept for the proposal shall be obtained from both the Conservation Commission and Board of Health, including confirmation of satisfactory soil testing for sanitary disposal prior to the planning board approval.'" That got stricken. And what was added, "Plans shall be approved by the, the Water and Sewer Commission for satisfactory design and access to current water and sewer infrastructure and facilities. A narrative report detailing the impact of the proposed project on the town's existing water and sewer capacity and infrastructure, including any planned or recommended upgrades, shall accompany the plans. This review may also may all, may result in requirements for installation of additional infrastructure or facilities at the applicant's expense." That was added, and Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was added by the select board, correct?
Correct.
That's, that's perfect. I should have picked up on that being a former water and sewer commissioner.
And, and, uh, so, uh, the folks at home know, the, uh, Board of Selectmen are the Water and Sewer Commissioners. So when you send the plans and the documents to the Board of Selectmen, it will be, in effect, going to the Water and Sewer Commissioners also.
Any comments?
Um, I, I love the add-on, it's a, it's perfect. Um, the, the, I just wanna just reiterate the, the paragraph above, which was stricken by the planning board. You know, there were two, there were a couple issues that I had with it, because you know, the way it's written, it, uh, the Conservation Commission had to approve of the concept for the planning board, you know, to, to move on, and they would only have, um, jurisdiction if the proposal is within 100 feet of a wetland, or within a flood zone, which we don't have much of flood zones in Acushnet, other than by the river. And, um, you know, under that review, their only jurisdiction is under the Wetlands Protection Act. So this sentence made no sense. Same for the Board of Health, the Board of Health, um, you know, shouldn't be chiming in to the planning board on how to plan the development. Their job will be to approve of a septic system design if they don't have sewer in the area they're doing their proposal. And under that, those conditions, that's the first step they're gonna do, is test the soils before they come forward with a planning board. So we don't have to, uh, have sentences in there for extra steps for anybody that makes no sense, you know, from a development standpoint.
Agreed, agreed. Any other comments, concerns? Okay, moving on. Uh, page 29, uh, the third paragraph. "Failure of other boards or agencies to make a written recommendation or submit a written report within," it had 35 days, and, and the select board wished to increase that to 60 days. Uh, "Of recipients of the application shall be deemed a lack of opposition." Uh, they made a good point, sometimes we only have one meeting in the summertime, one meeting a month in the summertime. Uh, sometimes you don't have a quorum. Uh, there's lots of different situations that might arise to where 35 days might be a little tight to, uh, render a decision. Uh, so I agree that adding a little bit more time to, uh, 60 days, uh, was a good idea.
I, I agree. I, I agree, and considering that we don't have a town planner or when we're gonna get one, um, that covers us a little bit more.
It, it helps, and it gives us a little bit more time, yeah.
To, uh, what we gotta vet out. So if we gotta send it out for a re- review, um, it gives ample time to do that.
Agreed.
And I'll, I'll make this comment as well, is that, uh, I agree, is when you think about it. When they file it, when they file an application, all the plans get distributed to all the listed boards and commissions. And then the public hearing won't happen for at least twenty-one days because of legal advertisements. You know, so we'll, we'll have a, a public hearing if somebody wants to wait on comments to see the public hearing, or they haven't got to it, that's fine, you know? No hearing is gonna be approved in one, no project's gonna be approved in one hearing anyway. So it's usually would be continued, there's gonna be peer review for stormwater, you know, so the sixty days is, is a good timeframe, it really works. When you look, when you think about this type of project, this would probably take three months to get an approval, you know, at a minimum.
Right, right, this isn't a small, these are only small projects. Okay, moving on, that's it for the page twenty-nine. Moving on to page thirty. Um, all the way down to, uh, fee structure. Um, outside consultant. The planning board may promulgate reasonable rules and regulations. Consistent with the general law, chapter forty A, section nine. To implement this section, including rules relating to the employment. Of outside consultants at the applicant's expense. Added to that is pursuant to chapter M G L. Pursuant to M G L, chapter twenty-four, section fifty-three G is what was added, which is basically the Massachusetts general law. Was added to the end of that paragraph. Questions? Uh, moving on, the letter F. Further conditions. A tract of land that is subject to a special permit granted under this section shall not be further divided. And not, and, and a note to this effect shall be shown on the plan. Added to this is the special permit. And order of conditions, any covenants in the endorsed plan with the note. That this section or tract of land shall not be further divided. Shall, and it shall be recorded at the registry of deeds. I, I like this, this is basic, and I was a little confused at first, so, um. And correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, so if somebody has ten acres of land, they're coming in with a plan with ten acres of land. They build on, say, three to four acres. They cannot then take those other acres and then further subdivide them. Is that the reasoning behind this?
I, I believe that that's the reasoning.
Right.
I, I.
Go ahead, see.
I said, I, I like it, it just, just basically, it's a permanent record when it's on a, when it's on a registry of deeds. As we pass through the planning board and the next generation comes along, it's there, it's recorded, you know?
Yeah, makes perfect sense, perfect sense.
And, um, and that. Is that, that comes down to it. There's a couple more highlights at the bottom, which is basically just reiterating everything I just read.
That, uh, that is the explanation, it's not part of the, uh, technically, it's not part of the warrant article. It's just an explanation for the town meeting, so, uh, if. You, if the planning board wants to endorse the article as, uh, described by the chair. Then we can go to print with it.
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we approve, um, revisions to, um, Article twelve.
I'll, I'll second the motion, um, but if we could have a very quick discussion of the, that punch list at the end. I understand, well, I, I now understand that that. That's just a summary, and that's not part of the bylaw, but Jamie, you might wanna change. The height limit says thirty-five feet of living area. Um, so I might get the impression that we're approving a three-story tenement, we're not. It's, it's two, two floors of living space. I can, and the summary, but that's, that's what people are gonna go right to, right? So.
Yep.
That, that, that's my only discussion, Mister Chairman, after I second the motion.
All right, because that's easy, because it's not part of the warrant article, so it's just an editorial change.
Yeah, sure, okay.
Okay, we have, uh, we have a motion, we need, uh, a second, and we, Dave gave us a second. Can I get a roll call vote, Steve?
Um, yep, Steve Bush, yes.
Dave?
Dave DeViggen, yes.
Ryan?
Ryan Dishamps, yes.
And I'm a yes, it is unanimous. We will send this back to the Selectmen with the full approval of the planning board.
Mister Chairman. The planning board, uh, the Board of Selectmen has, uh, taken the stormwater bylaw out of. The warrant, they are going to send it back to. The planning board and the Conservation Commission for further study. They asked that the chairs of the commission and the board. And one other member, uh, get together, the, so you would have a, two members. Of the planning board, two members of the Conservation Commission, work with staff. And then present an article in the spring.
Okay, um. We're fortunate to have the Chairman of the Conservation Commission on Zoom. Um, Ryan, you heard what he said. Uh, I will choose one member from my board, you can choose one member from your board. Uh, we'll sit down, we will go over the stormwater bylaw, the way it's written. And, um, and come to, uh, an agreement on what we're gonna do with the stormwater bylaw. And then make sure that we have, and we're gonna start this much earlier, so we have all our Ts crossed and, uh, 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 everything done. Uh, prior to the spring meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Go ahead, Brian, sorry.
Yeah, how you doing? Um, yeah, I, I have no problem with that. Um, that's, that's why I tuned in. Um, I saw the Selectmen's meeting, and, and, uh, I, you know, I fought this bylaw tooth and nail. I, I didn't have an issue with the bylaw that we have, I just wanted to add the proper language to it, to get us in compliance. With our MS four permit, so, um, I know there were some changes that you guys recommended. Um, with the, uh, you know, the regulations going to, um, town meeting, um. And, uh, something with subdivision, I think, um, you know, I, I tried to trim as much back, me and the former chairman, Bob Roach. Cut this thing right up and eliminated everything we could, and we sent it to Conoco for, um. You know, final approval to make sure we'd be in compliance with it, and, um, they kicked it back to us, and there was like one minor change that we had to keep in there. And, um, that, you know, it was, it was pretty. Cut down by us, I mean, I got more hours involved in that thing than I, I'd like to admit. Anyways, um. But yeah, so ultimately, you know, I just wanted, you know, the public to know and you guys to know that. There's nothing nefarious in this bylaw. Ultimately, I, I just wanna get it done and over with. So we don't have a three-letter agency slapping us with a fine because our town's out of compliance, you know, um.
I couldn't.
Dartmouth.
Be with you more.
Fairhaven, um, they, it, it's just a cookie cutter bylaw, like, here's the basic language. Yeah, there's stuff in there that I don't agree with either, but as long as we're in compliance. That's my main issue, and I, and, and I have no problem working with you guys to, um, get this thing going. We also have. The regulations that were. Submitted to us too from Conoco, so we can, we can look at them too, you know, just so you, or at least you guys can see them, so that you can see that. I mean, and even that, the commission's gonna vote on them, that's, that comes down to us. I think it's state law that, you know, the regulations are imposed by us, but even that, I am going to go through them with a fine-tooth comb. So that, I, I don't wanna stick it to people either, I just wanna uphold the Wetlands Protection Act and, and make sure that our towns. In compliance and we are protecting our neighbors with stormwater, you know? So, um, I just wanna keep it basic and in compliance. That, that's my goal. If the commission has other ideas, then, you know. But, it, you know, I don't have an agenda. I, I'm not trying, you know, I, I joined the commission because I'm a hunter. And I wanted hunting allowed on conservation land, and it wasn't allowed. It is now, so I have, I mean. You know, I have no agenda, I just like doing my part, and I, and I try to. Do things with common sense and, and be courteous to everybody and try to help people out, and that, and that's ultimately, I just don't want the town to get fined, it, it'll affect my wallet, so that's.
I hear you.
My only goal.
I hear you, I hear you, and, and, and that's all of our, you know, everybody here volunteering to kinda help the town out. I don't know exactly why this got pushed back, but it did get pushed back. So, uh, like I said, we're not gonna wait until the last minute. You and I will sit down, we'll go over the bylaw, we'll go over the regulations, we'll go over everything, and we'll make sure. Well, well in advance before the spring meeting, we can have everything decided on, and, uh, come spring meeting, we'll, we'll finally get this done. I agree with you, there's nothing, you know, shady behind this whatsoever, we just wanna make sure that we have. The proper verbiage, the proper wording, and everything is exactly the way it's supposed to be prior to going in as the new bylaw.
Exactly. I, I look forward to it.
Thank you, thanks, Ryan, for you coming on.
Thanks, guys.
All right, gentlemen, uh, we only had three articles to go over. We approved the special permit requirements, we approved the over fifty-five. Bylaw, and the stormwater management has been put on hold. There is no planners update, there is no town planners long-term update, and we don't have a town planner. Uh, there is no other business, and the next meeting is Thursday, October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Before I ask for a motion, is there anything else anybody would like to say, mention, or anything?
Um, the only thing I would like to mention is that next Thursday. Uh, we have a solar project. And the, the last time we, we held a hearing, there was an issue with the butter notifications. And I, I hope that, uh, when that comes up on Thursday, um, I don't know if I can mention the name, but I won't. But I hope that that's been addressed, um.
I'll make sure that it is.
Okay, thank you, Mister Chairman.
And we did actually go back to them and tell them that they had to. Uh, file newer butter's notices, so, and they were fine with it.
Okay, great.
I'll make sure that that got done prior to them put on the agenda.
If, if, uh, they claim they did, tell them to bring the green cards and white slips if they don't have return green cards. That should be done at every public hearing for proof of notifications.
Yep.
Um, which should be a big, pretty big stack for that, that project.
You got it.
Without that, we shouldn't be moving ahead with the hearing.
You got it.
And they can bring it, like, you know, thank you.
I agree, you're welcome.
I'd like to, uh, I, I just like to say that, um. Um, the, I'm kinda proud of the, um. Um, the cooperation between the planning board, Board of Selectmen, uh, Mister Kelly's assistance in this whole thing. Um, it made everything go pretty good. Everybody, it had a whole lot of eyes on it, which, which should happen. Um, and it did happen, um, and I think that's fantastic.
I totally agree with you, uh, again, I would, I'd like to, uh, reiterate that the Select Board did go through this with a fine-tooth comb. Um, I liked the back and forth, uh, that's what it's supposed to be, we're supposed to have changes and go back and discussion. And, uh, it wasn't pushed through, uh, in any ways, you know, form or another. We had nothing on the books. This is a really, really great start, um, and, um. I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm proud of the way it, uh, it was done. So with that being said. Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a roll call vote, Mister?
Need a second, need a second to that.
Oh, I do need a second. Rushing it. I got a second, in favor? Brian, hi, Steve.
Uh, Steve Bush, hi.
Dave DeViggen, hi.
Mark Francois, hi. Jamie, thanks for attending.
No problem, Mister Chairman, thank you, and everybody have a good night.
Have a good night.